Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the board on a subject that is not on our agenda? If you wish to do so, and we do have three who have signed up, please fill out one of those orange documents at the back table and bring it on up. The three people that are here to speak tonight, we'll ask them each to limit their comments to three minutes. Stacy is really good on her stopwatch. And we do ask you to come to the podium to address us, state your name and what you want to talk about. And we'll welcome you.
First is Ann Gary.
Good evening. Is this on? I hope. As I checked off on my sheet, I am a parent, an employee of the district, a resident, and a graduate of Monomeda High School. That's not on the sheet, but that... So I'm here talking on behalf of the Monomeda Education Association. And what I want to just kind of address tonight is I want to address the members of the board on behalf of the members of the Monomeda Education Association. We understand that the district is facing a significant financial deficit for the 2018-2019 school year. Over the course of the next couple of months, the board will be confronted with difficult decisions that will be necessary to move forward toward a balanced budget. It is our hope that those decisions are thoughtful and made according to the timeline proposed by Mr. Menazi. I have been to many, many meetings and have communicated with teachers, staff, administrators, and several board members. I have seen the work put into providing the board with data, guidance, and recommendations on enrollment. The reality of the situation is that no one knows all of the answers. No one has a crystal ball. No one can predict to the exact dollar or to the precise student what will happen. But we all want the same thing. We all want to provide the best education and school experience for each and every student. In order to do this, we need to know the budget, we need to know the estimated enrollment, and we need to know staffing for next year. These are the pieces we need to... we all need to move forward to begin planning for next year. I am not here to tell you what decisions to make. That's your job. I am here to ask you to move forward and start tonight with setting enrollment so the process can move forward. There's no doubt that budget reductions are extremely difficult on all sides, and no one wants cuts that impact kids. But we do need to know where we are headed. Unfortunately for some of our members, that will mean bringing their strengths and talents to another district. For others, it will mean working hard with colleagues and administrators to meet head-on the cuts for next year and the challenges they will bring. We are frustrated, and we are waiting. Please lead us forward. Thank you.
Thank you. For those of you who are not aware, when people come and speak to us at the board, we really don't interact. We take the information presented, but we really just take it under advisement, listen to it, but we don't ever respond to it or dialogue about it at the time. So we're not going to... we don't want to be... appear to be rude by not saying something to her for her good words, but that's what we do when you come talk to the board.
Next is Adra Haiman.
Good evening. I'm Adra Dirks-Haiman, and I am here to address you as a teacher. I am working as the last-minute hire for the ninth kindergarten section that was hired... that was set up this fall. And I'm here to let you know that we have quite an amazing kindergarten team, which I imagine you're already aware of. However, I do want you to know that the kindergarten team and myself have full support in moving forward with an open enrollment potential option to move to 180 students so that we can balance programming and have consistent programming, especially as our populations change in upcoming years. We are fully aware of social-emotional developmental needs that have been shifting in the last decade, and this is something that we continue to see the need for. We do believe that consistent classrooms, consistent programming for families will make a great impact in the best type of education for the whole child of our students in Monomeda, also giving us a foundation as they move forward through our district to provide that solid financial base that we can depend upon as a staff and faculty. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Adra.
Next, we have Anthony Govek.
I am Anthony Govek, and I'm the Spanish teacher at O.H. Anderson. I'm here to respectfully ask that the board reject the administration's short-sighted recommendation to eliminate K-5 Spanish. Some might say wrongly that the students can still learn how to speak Spanish with the middle school and high school offerings. Into that argument, I would respond by asking that person a few questions. Number one, when did you start learning a second language, middle school, high school, college? Okay, number two, can you speak that language fluently? I'm sure the answer to that question is no for 97 percent of the public. Is that what we are offering our future Zephyrs? A repeat of our generation's mistake? A lifetime of saying "woulda, coulda, shoulda" with regards to speaking Spanish? For us, it just affected our social possibilities, but for them, it will affect their professional possibilities. The Spanish department already suffered severe cuts during the last budget crisis. We went from a half a year of instruction time in sixth and seventh grade to a quarter. Think about it. Some kids who finished sixth grade Spanish in November of 2017 won't get it again until March of 2019. Reality check, that's called a crisis. A crisis that has been managed by the Spanish department, but it's about to become a catastrophe if the K-5 program is eliminated. After the last round of cuts, the Spanish department decided we were going to focus on building students' confidence to speak Spanish in the classroom. That means every student needs to get comfortable speaking Spanish. Not an easy task, especially with the limited time they're given. At the middle school, Mrs. Carlson introduced the AWO technique where she only speaks Spanish to the students. I have developed my program to feed into Mrs. Carlson's class so that the students can get the most out of that experience. For third grade, it's all about building a relationship and fun, fun, fun. For fourth grade, it's all about using that relationship to get those amazing, filter-free fourth-grade brains to work. And work they do. We focus on grammar like a laser. It's all grammar all the time. I can teach a fourth grader in 10 minutes what it takes me a whole week to teach a seventh grader. For fifth grade, it's grammar for the first half of the year and it's conversational... conversational confidence building for the second half of the year. I currently speak to my students 90 percent of the class time in Spanish, and they're speaking back to me. So my fifth grade students are currently going through the transformation of never believing they would ever speak Spanish to knowing they already do. They feel successful and empowered, and that confidence stays with them for life. Granted, there are exceptions, but we can all agree that expecting the majority of self-conscious middle schoolers to get up in front of their peers and speak a language they don't know and have no prior exposure to is not fair to the students or Mrs. Carlson's program. That's why you start early. It's common sense. I teach 700 students a week. The district gets a lot of bang-for-the-buck out of my program. I make a difference in my students' lives. I teach with passion and enthusiasm, and I teach them to love learning. Ending the program at O.H. disadvantages their ability to be bilingual and compete in the new global economy and sends them the devastating message that their hard work and success in Spanish classes meaningless. A job well done is not rewarded, and instead their success is denied, dismissed, rejected. The lifelong consequences of that for these kids is not a legacy that Monomeda will be proud of. For the sake of these kids, make the right choice. I can get another job, but they won't get another chance. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for the document.
Yes, thank you.
Now, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Roll call of attendance.
Done.
Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. We have been given by members of our community about $2,200 in donations, for which we are very grateful that those dollars are used to enhance the programs that we have for all of our students as directed. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We do have some presentation tonight. Obviously, you did not come here to listen to the school board meeting. You came here for the good part, the fun part, and we're looking forward to it.
Board members, can I get you to come up front, please?
Madam Chair, members of the board, it's my pleasure to... I have several middle school students here tonight. And I first want to call up Jackie Ahn. Jackie's an eighth grader in our building, and she's our Academic Achiever Award winner. Her picture was in the White Bear Press yesterday, the little article. This was written by some of her teachers. Monomeda Middle School, eighth grade student Jackie Ahn is involved in a wide variety of activities and organizations. Jackie is an outstanding and conscientious student at MMS, where she is a leader on the student council, a member of the middle school newspaper, and competes on the middle school gymnastics team. In addition to her scholastic pursuits, she is also involved in a local church youth group, performs in a Chinese dance group, attends Mensa activity nights, and was selected to present an award for the Upper Midwest Hall of Fame Lariats inductee for 3M. In her spare time... Do you have any spare time? She ice skates, she plays piano, and even volunteers to walk dogs in her neighborhood. Jackie's diverse interests, academic success, and desire to help others in her community make her the perfect candidate for this year's Rotary Academic Achiever Award. So, thank you, Jackie. Congratulations. Now, I would like to invite Abby Segelsky, Sadie Stembridge, Catherine Lengel, and Nina Gillett up here, please. All right. This is the middle school Fab Four. You guys, why don't you swing around here so everybody can see you? Okay, this is the middle school Fab Four. These are sixth graders. They compete in the first regular league competition. The competition has three parts: robot programming and design, solving a real-world problem with a project. This year's theme was water problems, and core values, which includes teamwork, professionalism, cooperation with other teams, and having fun while working hard. The girls' project was implementing labels on foods that are water-friendly, similar to organic labeling. Their pilot ran in River Market and Kwalski's. Did you know that two-thirds of the water used in the world is made from making food? Their project research took first at state this year. Two teams go on to compete at Worlds, and they are one of them that will be competing in April at Worlds. Last year's team got to go to Sydney. They get to go to Detroit. But it's Worlds somewhere. It's in Sydney's Worlds. So congratulations, girls, and good walking in mind.
We have one more recognition tonight, and this is the national merit semifinalists advancing to the national merit finalists. Well, we have three people that are doing that. Only one of them can be here tonight. Unfortunately, Alec John could not be here, and Anika Sosad has a different obligation. She's playing basketball right now for the chance to go to the state tournament if they win tonight against De La Salle playing over at Eastridge. But can I have Andrew come forward here, please? In order to be a semifinalist, you have to have really high test scores in the national merit finals or the testing that they do. But to advance to the finalist stage, you have to fulfill several requirements. Each semifinalist in his or her high school has to submit a detailed scholarship application. They provide information about the semifinalist's academic record, participation in school and community activities, demonstrated leadership abilities, employment, and honors and awards received. A semifinalist must have outstanding academic record throughout high school, be endorsed and recommended by a high school official, write an essay, earn an SAT scores that confirm the student's earlier performance on the qualifying test. It's very extensive, and it's quite an accomplishment. And one of our students here, Andrew, is here to be recognized by the school board for advancing to the national merit finalist stage. So, Andrew, congratulations.
We'll just wait a minute for the crowd to exit. Great awards, all of them.
Yeah.
Really good. We also tonight have an update on special education.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I've asked Beth Sineen, our director of Special Support Services, to make a presentation about what's happening with special education. So, Beth, I get you.
Thank you, Dr. Larson. Madam Chair, and members of the board. My purpose in my presentation this evening is to give you an update on enrollment, programming, and then current focus areas for special education. I also have Marilyn Walsh and Chad Garros here this evening to help me with that, to update you on some of the programming that they're doing at the high school. Our first slide shows that currently, as of January 2018, we have 421 students that have been identified with special educational needs. And on there, you also see the breakout between males and females. Looking at that number, the second slide here shows you how that breaks out in regards to the areas that students have qualified for. And this is district-wide, early childhood through age 21. And then our third slide shows how that breaks out between disability areas. The second part of my presentation is to talk about the programming that we currently have in place for our students. Early childhood, as you know, has totally exploded. We are currently at 60 students. All of our spaces for special education are filled for next year. Some of the areas that they have been focusing on are the social-emotional programming needs. A couple years ago, our early childhood staff went through training for responsive classroom so that students coming into kindergarten would have some of those pre-skills, which then are supported by our K-5 programming. And then this summer, I had a couple staff members that created Camp Com and Peak, which are two programs you're going to hear about this spring. They weren't able to join us this evening, but they do want to come and share not only the programming that they have created, but also an update and the impact that they feel that the new programming has had, not only for students, but also for staff. What they have done is really looked at what are some of the strategies that they're using within special ed, and then what are strategies that they can provide and help regular education teachers with. And then, as I said, we're just seeing a higher need of students in regards to the intensity of the disability, but also the number of students that have social-emotional needs. Last... this fall, we also looked at our emotional behavioral programming at Wildwood Elementary. We just have seen students come to us at an earlier age needing additional and more intensive support than we have in the past. So what I did is I had 916 come in and consult with us, and what they did is came in and looked at our current programming, recognized our strengths, and then made some recommendations. So as they looked at the strengths, some of the areas that they felt were strong were that we're currently providing that social skills support, that we are helping students be mainstreamed as often as possible, and then there is a true collaboration between certified staff members. Some of the needs that they recognized were the needs for reinforcement systems, and that means it could be a point system. It could be different things that help students really focus on their behaviors and then reward them for showing the appropriate behaviors. Also, visual supports, which could look like a picture schedule so students know what their day is going to look like and what to expect. And then also really defining the responsibilities between staff members. We're also looking at how do we make sure that what we're implementing is being implemented with fidelity? We're looking at how to collect data on students in regards to are they meeting their goals, and if not, how often, and what the frequency is of that happening or not happening? And then looking at what are the protocols to communicate with parents and when and how that is going to occur. Two years ago, we also looked at our emotional behavioral program at O.H. Anderson. We did a lot in-house. This year, I had 916 come in. You'll see that there's probably a greater number of strengths, only because we've really been working on that the last couple years. But a lot of the same type of things that we have in place, really looking at the individualized programming for the behaviors, the goals, reinforcement. A level system is helping students understand where they're at, if higher number means that they need more support, lower number means that they are able to be more independent. And then making sure that expectation strategies are posted, that there's communication and collaboration between our certified staff, and then planned and structured social skills groups. So these are all things that are currently in place. And then identifying the needs in regards to more communication and more training for paraprofessionals. And that has already started. Mrs. Bowens has already started putting that in place. And then some additional behavioral management strategies. Last year, we looked at our six-through-12 developmental and cognitive disability program, and we updated our curriculum and scheduling. We've added some additional courses, one in which an additional reading course. And then Mrs. Walsh and Mr. Garrel will share with you some of the programming that they're doing. And then really looking at how do we provide behavior plans and some additional assisted technology. And a lot of times for this population, it's about how to communicate and using iPads or using visuals for students who are not real verbal so that they're able to communicate their needs. Passages, we started two years ago with eight students. Next year, we're projected at 27. We've got increased partnerships with local businesses. You had an opportunity to read about Jacobson Apple Orchard this fall. Students are working at the lodge. We had one of our first students hired through the food service program at the high school. So we've had a lot of increase in the opportunity for students. And then we'll have our first graduation this spring. Focus for this year that will continue until next year, we're currently under a file review, which means MDE has identified files that we have to go through and make sure that they meet the criteria. And if they don't, then we have an opportunity to make corrections and re-submit. And then in... not next year, but the year after, they'll come in and do an actual onsite review. We're looking at a new electronic IEP system, which we've identified with Synergy, and Patrick Cruthers is working with us to figure out training and who our source will be for that. And then we're in our second year of our assisted technology grant, which Barb Conley shared with you last spring. So we're looking at how do we continue to provide students with the technology support that they need to make them more independent? Any questions that you have on the first part? Yes?
Like, when goals are... if certain... if kids aren't meeting their goals as they transition from one school to another or just within grades, what is... how do they... what happens, kind of? How are they treated if the goals aren't met? What happens?
What will happen is they'll meet with their individualized educational team, and they'll look at their plan, make sure that it's appropriate.
Oh.
So if they're not making progress, then they could adjust it with strategies. They could adjust it with time in special ed. It could be a variety of things. Yeah. Yep. Yes.
On one side, you mentioned that for ECSE, we're full at 60 students. Is that right? So if we're full, and we have students with needs, what happens? So students are returning them away? Do they have somewhere else to go?
No, we're required to meet their needs. So we'll have to do some alternative programming. Yes. And we'll have to look at that. But currently, we have so many spaces in each classroom, and those spaces are full. So we'll really have to look at if that continues to grow, how are we going to meet those needs?
I also appreciate the work you've done in partnering with 916. I think they're an important partner in the work that we do with our district size. So I really appreciate the fact you're reaching out to our partner and working so collaboratively with them.
And they'll be offering some training this summer, which we'll be able to take advantage of. The other thing that I wanted to mention is our parent group has been very involved, too. They have sponsored the Pacer Program at Wildwood for Count Me In, and what that is, it teaches children about disabilities. And then the bullying program at O.H. Anderson. And then along with that, Anne Seis-Sunberg has put together a parent handbook, which will go out this spring, which you'll have a chance to take a look at. And then they're in the process of... we have a parent group that's sponsored through the school, and then we have one that Sarah Newman has put together through community ed. So they're looking at where they overlap and what are the things that they can do together to support parents. So I think we're on the right track, and we're just in the process of continuing to build. So, anyway. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the fun part with Marilyn and Chad. I gave you all the dry information, and they're going to show you some of the things that they're able to do at the high school.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us to speak about what's going on in our classroom as well. Why we're here, when I came from Blaine High School, I mean, our choir room was so inclusive and so diverse, and I came to Monomeda, and I was in a little shock because those populations are higher there, of course, in their school district. But I was so used to having all kinds of students in my classroom, and that was not there my first year, and I didn't see any of those other students in the hallway either. And I was... I was like, do we even have a special ed program? And so after my first year, some of the special ed department came to me and said, "We have two students with Down Syndrome that would like to participate in choir. Is that okay with you?" I said, "Yes, please, and send more if you can." And during that year, there were some growing pains. We had one student who was a distraction the whole time, and I went to the special ed department and said, "I'm great. I want them there. I need support." And so we got through the year, and in the summer, they said, "Okay, we have those two students who want to return. Is... there are more that want to come in? Is that okay?" And I said, "Yes, of course, but do we have a support place and... you know, support and place to offer so that all students get to learn, and it's not just me focusing on individuals?" And so they said... Marilyn Walsh is in the special ed department. She has a degree in music education. "Why don't you guys co-teach this program?" And our concern at first was, how do we make sure that those students from the special education department develop, learn, gain vocal technique, but also those with typical needs grow and to become better as well? So what do we do now? So I went to my former colleague at Blaine High School, and because shortly after I left, she combined with the special ed department to have a class just for those students with special needs and those students who wanted to be a part of that choir, that chose to be a part of that choir. And so she said they have a buddy system. She shared with me some of the selection of music that they've used. She showed me some of the slides that she does to work with students in the classroom and talked about solfège. We call them kind of our ASL for singers, the do, re, mi, fa, so, because they all have hand signs. And some of those students use ASL in some of their language so that they kind of learn it even quicker than our typical need students. So we... the first thing we did was implemented the buddy system. We asked for volunteers. We didn't quite have enough, so I started handpicking kids that I thought would be great with that and talked about the individual needs of their buddy. And what they do is they work either like with written skills during the class. They help write out their thoughts. Sometimes they will speak for them if their verbal skills aren't developed very well. And they help them with robes to get ready for the concert. They stand next to them and help them sing their part. And during our first concert, they even helped us introduce the songs that we were doing. And they... so they got a script together. They practiced speaking, and then also introduced our songs at the concert. We used some of the ideas from Blaine about song... We used some of the ideas from Blaine about songs, and then most of them focused on working together, using music as a connection tool, and then just fun things that her students asked to sing, and then we asked if our students would like to sing that as well. And during the class, we always talk about everybody's abilities, that everybody has strengths, everybody has weaknesses, and it's just not those students, you know, have, that have disabilities. Because some of us have stronger points, and some of us have those weaknesses that we need to work on. That's why we're all in that classroom, is to get better and to learn and develop. And we repeat over and over again that it's not a us and them classroom. It's always us when we're in the classroom. Where do we go from here? It's a first year, there are growing pains, so it's a work in progress. Ms. Walsh and I have discussed having her make some slides to show in the classroom with the sign, or the solfège, kind of the ASL for choir, and having that posted on our screen in front of the students all the time, showing lyrics so they can read them. Also, who sings when? How does a song work and how's it put together? And then she is also going to talk about our survey, where students have brought up other things they would like to see, either the remaining remainder of this year or in the future, so I won't steal her thunder yet. And then, so we're willing to work together in the future, just to make sure that all students are welcome in choir. So many of them love music, and they go about being able to sing in different manners. And so I'll hand that over to Ms. Walsh.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to brace a little bit, I am short. All right. It used to be called the ninth grade choir, but now it's called Dolce Armonia, Sweet Harmony. Because this is what we currently have. Dolce Armonia is now a first level choir at the high school, and it's open to all students, as you were saying, of all abilities. Currently, we have students in grades nine, of course, because it was the ninth grade choir. But we also have students in 10th grade and 7th grade. The reason why the 7th graders come on over, it's like, what? 7th grade? We have two students that would love to be in choir, but unfortunately, at the middle school, because of the scheduling, it was, the 7th grade choir was the same time as DAP, adaptive FIED. And our students need to take that class. So Mr. Garrel and I were talking about it, can we incorporate the 7th graders as well? And it's been working beautifully. For next year, we'll just see how the schedule goes, we don't know that just yet. One of our, the 7th graders would like to maybe be in 8th grade choir next year, the other one would like to stay at the high school. And that particular student is of age of high school age, so she fits in pretty well, I'd say. Currently, we have a choir of 23 students, so like Mr. Garrel said, we'd like to expand. We have six students with special needs, and we have the buddies, we have two teachers, one accompanist, and a para who joins us. And here's some of our kids. This was right before the winter concert. I just love this picture because it truly depicts the camaraderie, the, the feeling that whenever we come into the choir rehearsal, this is what we see. It's pretty exciting. As Mr. Garrel said too, we did a student survey, actually, we were going to do this in May, but I'm a part of a PLC, it's a cross-curricular PLC that's for differentiation. Part of what we are doing as a group is working on surveys. It was a perfect opportunity to have a student survey. So you have that in your packets as well, but I just wanted to show you that this was what the survey was about. Is the choir class what you expected? If no, what did you expect? Your favorite part, least part, least favorite part? And then I wanted to find out, if you're a buddy for a student with a disability, yes or no? No, would you like to be a buddy? And if yes, how is this relationship working for you? And how did our buddies see this? Is it something helpful or not helpful? So some of the results that we have. What you expected, 10 of our students said yes, seven said no, and one said for the most part. That kind of thing. And if no, what did you expect? Some of the students said, well, I expected more guys. Currently, we have three. So, and one is a student without a disability, one is, or two of them were students with special needs. So they said, more guys, it's supposed to be mixed choir. Some weren't expecting to have as many buddies as we have, or not as many buddies, as many students with disabilities, but they're okay with that. They said it's been just fine. So you can see the results of that. Least favorite parts, and some of the times it's the announcements and some of the peripheral things. But for the most part, they are really pleased to have the students with disabilities in that group. I asked, are you a buddy? Five of the six answered, and the relationship, you can see what it says up there. One says, very well. Great relationship working for you. Good. Good with four exclamation points. And that particular student said, if you need a student to come talk about what we're doing in choir, please have me come to the school board. I would like to talk to them about it. So I think we're okay. One student said, fairly well, my buddy can be a lot to handle, but they're still nice. You can imagine who that was they're talking about. Anyway, and then one student said, I think this is a good responsibility for me to have. I think this is awesome. I asked, has your buddy been helpful? Six answered yes, one answered no, but in talking with him further, he says, yeah, I really mean yes. But it was on the survey, what can I say? They offered a lot of different suggestions and comments for next year. One of the comments I took to heart right away, it was, Ms. Walsh sings too loud. And so it's like, okay, I can tone it down. But I'm there and the para is there to help sing along and help encourage them as they're singing their different parts. So I've been toning it down, it's good. They also suggested that maybe in the future for concerts, we could have a song that does not include our special needs students, and they could sing, or have a song that features the non-disabled students. But then the special needs students could have a portion of that, like a special section as a possibility. We also talked about having perhaps the special needs students starting the song and having the rest kind of joining in. So there's different suggestions there. I'm excited for what's going to happen in the future, and we would definitely like to invite you all to come to the March 26 concert. You'll get to hear Dolce Armonia, Armonia, and you'll also get to hear the ninth grade band. So please do consider coming and hearing these delightful, wonderful students of all Any questions?
I want to sit by Emma.
Yes. Yep. We have one student that's really just crushing on her, we'll say that. But I want to include all of their voices, all their comments, because they're all valid. Okay, any other questions? Yes?
What opportunities have you had through PLCs and other professional development for co-teaching training? Because co-teaching is very, very difficult. It's a huge learning curve for our teachers, which I think is fabulous, but I'm just wondering what support you've been able to gain through the district or other resources.
And that's one thing I did mention, is that some of the growing pains are who takes leadership, who, you know, who does what? What are Ms. Walsh's expectations? What are my expectations? And so that's something we have to sit down with, and then we haven't had any training as far as co-teaching within the choir room, especially in this situation. So.
So, but what I, you, what I do with the students, if we have some downtime in choir, or it just depends on the day, I take all the students whom I work with directly, and anybody else that wants to come, and we do have usually two or three students that come in. We go into our room 1303, which is our DCD program room, and we work on the songs. We, I have the lyrics up on the board, many of our songs are on YouTube, which is fabulous because I don't have a keyboard in my classroom. So, but I do play piano and I can accompany the kids. But we listen to YouTube and we follow along. The students sing with all their hearts, which I'm sure drives the English teacher and mixed store crazy sometimes. But they really sing out, and they really love singing. They're very passionate about what they're doing. The high school this year also has a PLC that's been focusing on co-teaching. And then we've also had several staff that have attended training through Metro XU. So I think the other piece of what you're asking is what has been available, and now we're seeing that there is a lot more available. So we have had some staff that have had the chance to take it, the opportunity to get that training.
Thank you. Kevin, did you have something?
This is wonderful. It's absolutely wonderful to hear this happening. Just, just warms, warms my heart to see that we're trying to get everybody together to do this. And I haven't checked my calendar, but I, if I can, I will plan to come.
Males, what are you going to do to get more males in? I mean, you know, I mean, come on, you gotta have a bigger choir. I mean.
That's right.
I mean.
Okay.
Any strategies?
And that's something Julie Kuzemius and I have, she's still back there, have been talking about how we can make that transition a six through 12 program, whether the, you know, rather than a six through eight program and a nine through 12 choir program. So we're brainstorming, we're working on it. We, we want that to happen for, for all of our, our students, so.
Choir is such a great.
It's in process, we're working, we're working on it.
Right. And what? Once the guys get into, they, they get so excited. You know, with one of our students are, who's pretty much a non-verbal, although he's getting better and better, his parents say, he's been singing more and more at home. He sings along, he has his iPad, he twirls around, and he, and he absolutely loves music, and he did not do that before this year. So lots of great stories.
Nice. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see you the 26th.
Yeah, you're right, it was the fun part.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for your time, but also thank Chad and Marilyn for their innovative approach. I think things like that are truly what makes the difference in the lives of our students. And I think their initiative is truly an example of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Emma, what do you have to say to us tonight?
Good evening, everyone. This week has been kind of hectic at the high school especially. Obviously, we had a snow day on Monday, so that caused some excitement throughout the student body. And then we, the, the boys hockey tournament, the state hockey tournament is going on this week. And so the boys played on Wednesday at the XL, and they won, and it was amazing game. And so they play tomorrow at 11:00. And right now, the girls' basketball team is playing in the section finals. And if they win, they'll be advancing to state, and I think the first game's on Sunday. And two weeks ago, we had Alpine State, and that was up at Giants Ridge in Bowabik. And two of our team members, Kacha Bastians, who's a junior, and Trigby Myers, who's also a junior, advanced to state, and they didn't place in the top 10, but they both got honorable mentions, and they did really well. The middle school musical was last, was last weekend. It was Alice in Wonderland Junior, and I heard it was really good. I wasn't able to make it. But also auditions for the high school musical were last week. It's going to be Beauty and the Beast, and rehearsals are starting. Spring sports are beginning. I know that after spring break, a lot of them will kick in. As Mr. Garrel's mentioned, we have, there's the Dolce Armonia concert on March 26. And then the 27th is Belvoir, which is the treble choir, and then it's concert choir, which I'm in, and the symphonic band. So if you want to come to that. And then April 3rd, which is a while, it's a while away yet, but that's our all-school testing day. So I'll be taking the ACT, and seniors don't have to go to school. And then the underclassmen will be taking, I think, the map, the map testing. So overall, it's been a pretty busy couple of weeks. I know that a lot of people are excited for spring break and the game tomorrow, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Emma.
I'm just going to report that at the halftime, Zephyr's up 21-19.
Good to know. We need a motion to approve the minutes of February 8th and February 22nd.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have some information items tonight, calendar of events.
I'd like to echo some of the things that Emma said, but also draw attention to a few other things. There are a whole host of terrific musical opportunities to be going to. From Monday, March 26th, as you mentioned, the Dolce Armonia concert, then on the 27th. But we also have on the April 4th, the community lunch, the high school jazz combo will be playing. They did a great job last year, some new students to it, but if you can get a chance to attend, it's from 12 to 1 o'clock on Wednesday, April 4th, $7 for lunch, and it's here in this room. We also have the jazz bands on Friday, April 6th, Wildwood Artist Series on April 7th. And then we also have the, the high school talent show coming up on the 13th and 14th. Then we also have the celebration of excellence, and we're going to have the legacy night coming up. So just a whole host of things. There's not something to like in musical that you're not trying hard enough, there's a ton of great stuff.
Does anyone else want to call anything out?
Julie McGraw couldn't be with us tonight, but she asked me to call out Brett Smith's retirement recital, which is Saturday, March 31st at 7 o'clock at White Bear Unitarian Church.
Oh. Thanks, Brett. All right.
And then one other thing, the Minnesota School Board Association has the day at the Capitol, and that'll be coming up, and we'll have a nice present there on Monday, March 19th.
During our February 8th meeting, we did close the meeting, close the session for a while, and every time we do that, we just sort of report out. We closed it to have a conversation about labor negotiations. Those are always kept private amongst the board with nobody there while we go through what those parameters might be. We have some policies to read tonight. I have a number of them on the second reading.
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the board, as you can see before you, there are policies that are listed here. There are some changes that we had, policy 522, student sex nondiscrimination. We identified the associate principal of activities and athletics as being the person responsible for the implementation of this as the Title IX coordinator. It had been the human resources supervisor, and we feel that change is a better change to have that. Includes the contact information, the address, and the telephone number. The second one is on the school district, 616 is the school district system accountability. We made some changes there. Lynn Vekker, Director of Student Support, Student Learning and Accountability, made some changes to this that it ties in more accurately with what we do. The change is on page 3, 616, number 3, review academic achievement data and goals is what we do in the fall. And in the winter, we review program and curricular changes from the previous year. We, it had appeared to be an emphasis on data and testing, and so that's a change that we've made in that. And then finally, so those are the changes that we've made with, with some changes for a second reading. Based on the first reading that we had, and policies with changes, that includes the school board committee, 213. What we've done with that particular policy is that we've changed that, that's the one about the school, excuse me, school board committees, we've added a committee. But we also, our goal is to do these things by resolution and also by consensus. And so we changed that so that the school board shall form committees by consensus. If consensus cannot be reached, then the chair shall appoint the members of each standing or ad hoc committee and designate the chair thereof. But we've been able to do that in the past without any problem. Those are changes that were recommended from the first reading. And then policy 533, the wellness policy, we did make some changes for that. The most notable one is on page 5. That's 533, number 5, page 101 in your packet, in which the food service director, in conjunction with the wellness committee, shall confer annually to review this policy for effectiveness and consistency with the law. Recommended changes shall be submitted to superintendent or designate for consideration. So that was a change that we had there. We did eliminate the part about the school district's food service program administrator providing an annual report to the superintendent or designate. So we made that change as well. And then finally, with the graduation policy, we made some changes in that. That's number 613, and that's on page 2. We had math with successful completion of Algebra II, and we changed that to mathematics, including algebra, geometry, statistics, and probability sufficient to satisfy the standards. And then in science, we added a part about CTE, career and technical education. Currently, we don't have anybody licensed to teach career and technical education, but in the event that we do, we have that in policy already. So science reads, including the biology credit, students must complete chemistry, physics, or career and technical education, CTE credit as part of the three-credit requirement. And then that CTE credit will be in that way. We also have an asterisk there about seeing the high school registration materials for the courses that meet the CTE requirement. And so those are the changes that we've made there. There were two other policies that we have on here, 413, harassment and violence, and 524, technology acceptable use policy. I'm recommending that we hold off on those for a second reading. Minnesota School Boards Association is going to be providing information later this spring about harassment and violence. And Patrick Cruthers and, and I and some other folks are working on policy 524, technology acceptable use, because we're doing an audit. Technology Acceptable Use, because we're doing an audit of our security. And so, we'll make those changes, and we'd like to incorporate that, so we won't be ready for a second reading at that time.
Okay, Kevin, did you have something?
Dr. Larson, on Policy 616, the district system accountability, much of that is dictated by statute. So, will that policy go back to MSBA for statute review? Because, I'm not familiar enough with the statutes to know. I understand the changes have been made to align with what we're doing, but I want to make sure we're still in line with the state statute of what we're doing.
Yep, I can do that.
Alright, thank you. And then. On Policy 616, graduation requirements, by adding CTE, does that help and support our students who are at 916 for CTE courses as well?
Yes, it can.
Okay, thank you.
Lucy, you're going to do a presentation on our search.
Has Patty come in yet?
No.
Let's, if, can we hold off until she gets here? And if she doesn't, I'll do it, but she's coming. Bill.
Did she walk in?
No.
Okay. Alright, Bill. Bill's going to talk about the levy update.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the possibility of a levy update for the November 2018 levy. Included in your board packet and up on the screen tonight, you'll see just a very brief memo as a follow-up to our February 22nd meeting. Really, the purpose here is to bridge the gap between when we introduced the concept of the November levy at the February 22nd meeting, and the time between the March 22nd meeting, which is when Springstead will be here to present the results of the survey that's currently going on regarding the levy. So, I'll review the memo and then take any questions that you have after that. So, at the February 22nd meeting, we looked at information on historical levy information, district levy comparisons, budget parameters. And then, we looked at three draft dollar amount and tax impact scenarios related to a possible levy. And then, finally, we looked at some possible challenges related to an upcoming referendum. So, the first thing I'd like to do tonight is just talk, circle back to those parameters that we discussed. So, you'll recall, an important factor in levy prep is looking at budget parameters. So, on February 22nd, we presented budget parameters on the revenue side, looking at a 2% increase, which we know we're going to have for next year, 2018-19. And then, we're assuming in the analysis a percent and a half after that for 2019, '20, and beyond. And then, on the expenditure side, educational expenditure is increasing by approximately $600,000 annually. And I'd like to note that the state budget forecast that we referenced briefly on February 22nd, came out on February 28th, did not substantially change this forecast. So, I'd like to pause here and just ask the question, are we okay with these parameters as stated and moving forward with the process using the parameters as we see here? Okay. So, moving on after that, this is a follow-up item from the February 22nd meeting. So, we talked about the average, the average residential home market value in our taxing district is approximately $350,000. And I put "average" in there twice, so please take that out. The median home market value in our taxing district is approximately $310,000. That was a question from February 22nd, just following up on that item. And then, just a couple of additional items. Springstead, as I discussed, as I mentioned before, will present the survey results related to the levy at the study session on March 22nd. And then, after the survey results and other follow-up items, we're recommending narrowing that dollar amount and tax impact scenario. So, three that were presented before on the 22nd, down to one and really focusing in based on the results of that survey. And based on that, we're still recommending formal approval of ballot language, which would include dollar amount and tax impact by the end of May, so before Memorial Day, which, as we discussed at the previous meeting, would leave us the 12 important weeks of the summer to be in meetings and communications, rather than determining the what and the why related to the levy, and that would be critical in making sure that we're prepared. So, as I mentioned, this is really just a bridge between February 22nd and March 22nd, but wanted to keep this, your attention to this important item. I'll take any questions that you have, but certainly, more information to come on March 22nd.
You heard anything about how the survey is going?
I know they've completed 300 questions as of yesterday. That's the extent, I don't know, Dr. Larson.
We're having a meeting with either Don Lipto or Kelly Smith to share the results of it on the 21st, and then, they'll be presented to the school board on the 22nd.
So, we're just clicking along.
Yeah.
To that point, and this is only one data point, but I did have a citizen call me and say, he said that he thought the call he received, I mean, after listening to him, then I figured out what he was getting at, but he felt the call was something that wasn't sanctioned by our district and thought that somehow we had gotten hacked or something was going on. So, you know, again, just one person, I don't know, I don't know how that, the preamble starts, but he right away, you know, called and said, Kevin, something's wrong. Hopefully, that didn't happen to any of the other folks that got called.
That's the only complaint, the only observation I can give.
Are they, they started making the phone calls? And what does the caller ID say?
That's a 651 number.
That's it, doesn't say.
I don't know what the other.
Springstead or. School district, okay. I think that would affect how you answer, if you answer or not. That's the only reason I asked.
Do you have an action item approving a resolution relating to the open enrollment?
Madam Chair and members of the board, earlier tonight, the enrollment committee met, and we discussed several things, and I have something to share that, for the school board to act on. But first of all, we've historically had four open enrollment windows. The enrollment numbers are looked at, determined whether or not grades should be closed to open enrollment or not. We use open enrollment to balance out class sizes, fill grade levels, and use our buildings most efficiently. And ordinarily, it's window, our four windows. However, the recommendation is that we pass the following resolution, and I'll read it if I may. Resolution relating to 2018, not 2019, open enrollment for all remaining windows. Whereas the state of Minnesota has established an enrollment options program permitting students to attend non-resident districts, whereas the state of Minnesota has also established criteria for school districts to approve or deny open enrollment applications based upon capacity of a program, excluding special education services, class, or school building. Whereas the school board seeks to maintain continuity of programs, curriculum, and services through consistent student enrollment, and recognizes that sufficient student enrollment ensures high-quality course offerings for resident students, as well as students enrolling under the enrollment options program. And be it therefore resolved that the superintendent be authorized to approve children who have sibling or siblings that currently attend, and children of employees as per Minnesota Statute 124D03 subdivision 5A, where grade capacity and class size permits, and additional student enrollments. Be it therefore resolved that the school board, direct administration, to use open enrollment to be fiscally responsible and efficient in the areas of staffing, use of space, and configurations. For the elementary schools, the goal is to have class sizes below the metro exu average. For the middle school, the goal is to adhere to the middle school model. And for the high school, the goal is to follow the recommendations of the right-size study of approximately 1,200 students. What this would effectively mean is that the school board would set their enrollment target, and then, we would act in January or February of 2019 on this open enrollment, very similar resolution. And then, it would be up to administration to get the students into the proper classes and configuration. And so, the recommendation is to approve the resolution as presented.
I move we approve the resolution as presented for the remainder of this calendar year. So, it'll take care of the board not having to discuss open enrollment. Again, it would fall to the hands of the administration.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Kevin's the only board member who is not at the open enrollment meeting. So, we all look to Kevin. We had a very good discussion, I felt, where all voices were heard. We were collaborative in that discussion and really worked to assure that we would be able to have, we would be able to hopefully meet our district's target enrollment, without having to come back to the board every two weeks for additional action, that the administration would be able to carry this out from here, knowing that we had set some basic parameters.
I was expecting this to go forward, not just for one year of this year.
Well, I wasn't, I wanted to be clear that it was for this year, because I thought Dr. Larson said something about next year, and so, I wanted to make sure it was clear that it is for this year as well. So, I don't know if.
As well, in addition to next year?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
You're not limiting to this.
No, I think from here forward, I'm sorry. I was just trying to make it clear that it was for this year.
Yeah, and that may have been unclear, because going forward, the board would act on basically this resolution. We have to act every.
It would be the framework for the resolutions going forward.
Right, setting the amounts.
Right.
Any additional discussion?
I just want to thank the board for getting to this point. I think it was the place we needed to get here, and I think this is really a good path for us going forward.
I agree. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Lucy, do you want to take some committee reports first and wait as long as we can?
Yep, I'll do it if I have to, but if Patty makes it, I would love.
So, any committee reports, AMSD, Mike, do you have anything to say?
I think Mark sent one out on his board notes to you all last week, so if you just read that, so.
The legislative session is gearing up. And so, they're putting forward some resolutions and some support.
Lucy?
I'd like to report on behalf of Julie for MAEF. She has sent me a statement, so I'm just going to read from my screen. At the February meeting, the following was discussed. Tickets for the MAEF Gala went on sale yesterday, March 7th. Gala is on Saturday, April 28th at JX, oops, Event Center. Tickets are $100 each. The request this year is that each member of our board donate $100 to help purchase concert tickets for the live auction. I believe the tickets will be for the Eagles and Jimmy Buffett concert at Target Center. Please bring your checkbook to our next study session. The board completed its second board-prepared meal last weekend at Martha and Todd Mickelson's house. Big thanks to Stacy, Kevin, Kevin's wife Molly, and daughter Bridgette, and Lucy for helping. But a fantastic mission moment from Ms. Elderborn on Maker Spaces at OHA. She demonstrated Cody bots to the group. She showed videos of cublets, little bit circuits, oh, boxles, and music recording stations. I hope I got those all right. It was a fascinating presentation that showed how kids are learning about coding and how these activities lower barriers for kids to make things. Last item, Steve Wogomat submitted his resignation from the MAEF board as he began his new role on the city council. If you have questions, contact Julie.
Thank you.
The EEA, Education Equity Alliance between Monamidi and North St. Paul, Maplewood, Yale, was canceled due to a snow day. We only meet twice a year. We can get something quickly back on the schedule for this vital work. So, that's my report on that, and I think the next one is MSBA, and I don't know, we're in this. Lucy's actually on the board of MSBA, and I'm the past president guy, so. I mean, Mark talked about, the only thing I really had was this MSBA day at the Capitol on the 19th of March, and it looks like Don. Laura is well on the way of getting our list together on who's going. I think one of the things I would add to that is, Mark, if we could get some appointments set up with our legislators, maybe you've already done it?
No, once we know who's going to be there, they, if they're going to meet with five or six, it's different, and I think just meet with one or two.
Judy, is this something we should change going forward? I am attending now as District 6 Representative, additional MSBA meetings. I'd be glad to swap.
I'm a hash pen.
Yeah, appropriate, I think it's appropriate that you did.
Okay, so we'll change the committee roster, Laura, would that be okay? Is there some work, I'm not sure.
We just approved a policy on consensus, sorry, so I'll make sure.
Strong consensus.
I'm appointing you because we're just.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And one more thing on Minnesota School Boards, were you going to say something else? Okay. One of the big pushes that we'll be having this year is about equalization. You may have seen an article in the newspaper. It was largely painted as a rural versus metro area equalization, but the simple fact is, is that in Monamidi, the tax dollar that Monamidi resident pays is proportionally higher than other districts around us because of the property values that we have. We don't have the commercial business property. And so, there was emphasis last year on supporting that. It did not, what made it out of committee, but did not get into the final bill. We'll be pushing that again this year. That's going to be a major emphasis that we have on equalization for revenue in levies.
I have one other request related to this. We have the celebration of excellence coming up. Will we be sponsoring a table again? So, we have in the past. Should we plan to do that at the study session, or is that too late?
We can do it at the study session. I've gotten a letter, I don't know if anyone else has, okay.
I just got one too.
Yeah, so, we're bringing our checkbooks to the study session anyway, but we should be planning for that as well, I think.
I think so.
All of these things that we do to support those activities are completely voluntary for each member of the board. Everybody who can does, if we can, we can support it to whatever is reasonable for each of us. So, there's really not meant to be pressure, or it's not meant to be that all the board has to buy a table. It's not like that. We do what we can, the best that we can do, because we all have families, and we all have budgets, and we all have cars that break down, and all of the above, so. And the 916 board notes are included in the packet. Which leads us back to the superintendent, Lucy, start on.
Yep, alright. You all received an email from Patty, but I'll go over a couple of things that were in there. The two open sessions are now complete. Patty is our liaison at Springstead. I had a phone conversation with her yesterday. She said the open sessions have been well-attended, which is great. She says we've had about over 200 people reply to the online survey. So, community members are responding to that survey and providing feedback for that leadership profile. All board members have been interviewed and had an hour whispering said, talking about leadership profile, so they'll be working on that. In an email that Patty sent to all of us yesterday, there was a timeline, and they're most concerned about that timeline. In the timeline, there were yellow items of things that would involve the board. I don't know if we want to discuss each of those tonight. Have to find mine.
Only if there are things that we need to discuss.
Well, I think we need to make sure they're on our calendar. I'm most concerned about the interview times, the selection. She's got some specific dates here for interviews and things like that, because we all need to be present. I'm not sure if it'd be easier to start holding some times for those, or how we want to handle that.
That could be a bit of a process, but I agree that we need to.
Right, I think it's easier to find time many weeks out than the week before.
Should we ask Laura to send out something, you know, these dates available, and check and see what we all can do? Does that make some sense?
Yeah, Laura, could you work with Patty at Springstead? I'll have her contact you and put out some dates, maybe through Doodle Poll or something, and we can get those established.
One of the suggestions that they have is that the semifinalists are selected at the school board meeting, and that's April 26th, that's already on our calendars to be there. So, I think that should be fine with that. But then, the interviews are going to be a little bit more tricky.
Right, and so, Patty and I talked about, you know, the first round interviews would have approximately six candidates, so we probably set up more than that, so the candidates would have a choice, maybe set up eight different times that we were available. And in that way, the candidates would be able to select one of those, and we'd cancel the ones we don't need. It would be easier than saying, well, here's six, and if they can't make those six, starting over. And then, same thing with the second round of interviews. One of the reasons, remember, we selected Springstead, is a lot of the work the board needs to do can happen independently. So, there is a video component to the application process, and we'll be able to do that piece on our own at home with the videos. We don't need to get together to watch those videos.
That's the gap analysis.
That'll come to us as well, but remember, there's that part where in the, in the application, the candidate sits in front of their video camera, and they answer some questions, and they send that to us, so we'll have those videos to watch. And so, on the bottom of that first page, we just have to review those videos prior to the interviews. So, some of the things in yellow are actual meeting dates, like the 26th, as Dr. Larson mentioned, is an existing meeting. And then, some other things we do need to get scheduled, and some things we do on our own.
I was just going to ask, are these going to be during the day? Type things, or can they be at night?
We would assume that most of our candidates would be employed, and evening interviews would be the best. And because they are open to the public, I think it would be respectful to the public to make them at night as well.
Is there a way to shorten the timeline? It seems like we're dragging it right up to the end. Is there some way we can compress some of this into shorter spaces? Is there something to, I'm saying?
Right. I asked the same question before I saw the timeline, that we were concerned about the timeline, you know, to make it as condensed as possible. And this is what was delivered, so I think they've been looking at that, and they've got some pretty short, you know, pieces in there. But a quality process is going to take time. With the recruitment piece, I'm not sure where we would reduce the time. With the recruitment piece, I'm not sure where we would reduce the time. I'm looking, you know, I'm not sure if other people have suggestions that we could share with them, but we asked them to have as condensed of a timeline as possible, because we knew we were going out later.
Question? Is Patty supposed to be here tonight?
She was at the high school during the open session. She said she'd come over as soon as that was done, but she could be held up by community because that session went till 7:30, and so she could still be at the high school with that session.
Because that would be, if she was here, that would be a.
Right. We were waiting for her to walk in the door.
Well, they still passed that. You could pass that kind of alarm to her.
Yes, yep. And I'll see if they can shorten it anywhere, but when, when I talked to her on the phone, I did relay the concern that has been expressed by the Board about the timeline, and asked them to make it as condensed as they could. I can ask her to take a second look at it, and I'll ask her to contact Laura for setting up some of those dates.
We spoke on Monday, she and I, and I was under the impression that the application deadline would be April 6 instead, which would be a week earlier. The candidates that, the potential candidates that I've spoken with, today was the Minnesota Association of School Administrators Conference. There's a fair amount of interest in that. I was approached by two different Superintendents, and I approached one. There's been a total contact of 16 people that have either expressed interest to me or I've reached out to. And so there's some interest in it. She told me that they were having people stop at the booth. They just had a one-page flyer. They're working on a much better brochure, but there is, there is very much of an interest in this. This is the only one that's left. Fredley is now recently opened. St. Anthony has filled, Osseo. And so if people are interested, they'll be applying. I think we can move it up a week on that. The other part of it is that it becomes Springstead's obligation then to screen a little bit more aggressively, and they would have to take, go a little bit more quickly in that sense. And so I think that could also be moved up. Then the semifinalist booklet, all of these things, I think, could move up a week, and that would give the Board a chance to, you know.
The piece I would be concerned about is they're working on the Leadership Profile, which more specifically says the characteristics and qualities we're looking for based upon the community input and the Board interviews and things. And if that's not done until the 30th, and then we move this other deadline up to the 6th, candidates have a week to respond to some very specific things that we'd be asking for, which I don't think is fair to candidates in terms of, you know, thinking if they have full-time jobs already, giving them an opportunity to truly put their best foot forward and show us their understanding of these leadership qualities. I, I mean, I'm going to ask, as the Board's requested, to see how much we can condense these things, but I'd be afraid to just all of a sudden say, the deadline's moved up to April 6 without making sure we can move.
You can discuss those things with her and see what they.
Yes, yes.
Because they may be able to do that, we just don't know it.
Right, right. But I'd be afraid to just move one date without looking at the repercussions of that with them. So I will talk to Patty tomorrow and see what we can get moved up, and then that would be reflected in the information Laura sends out, because if things can move up, that would change the yellow dates at the bottom. The interviews would be moved up prior to the week of May 7.
Okay.
So I will work with Patty on that.
Any other concerns or questions?
Has, have people been filling, going online and filling in community responses?
Yes, there's over 200 people who've filled out the community survey.
Good. Good.
And that was yesterday's number, so.
Have all of you done it? Do it, please.
I want you to adjourn.
Oh, Superintendent.
Oh, I want to.
All right. He shouldn't take it personally.
Reimagine Minnesota, we had our strategy meeting. That was the first of three that we have. There's nine strategies in all. This first one was about Strategy D, E, and F, and it was led by the Superintendent of North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale, Robbinsdale, and Richfield. Strategy D is to develop teacher preparation, recruitment, and retention for staff of color. That's a goal that we have as well. We've done some changes on our website that make us appear to be more, looking for more people with an experience with equity and a passion for that. Strategy E is elevate student voice and leadership and improve to ensure inclusiveness in the school culture and environment. We need to do a little bit more work on that. However, at the high school, Sarah Dusick and the students, I can't remember if it was the SAFE Students Advocating for Equity Group, held a focus group with teachers